I now call for the order of the August 15, 2016 meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:33 PM. Let the minutes show that a court was present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Mr. Turner and remain standing for the pledge allegiance and honor the Texas flag if you head by Mr. Moro.
Please bow. Dear Father, we do thank you for this glorious day you have given us. We thank you for the wonderful service we had this morning and the wonderful speaker that you sent us. And again, that we will finish strong in the end this year. We do ask to keep hand over our administration, our parents, and our teachers, and our students. We do thank you, love you for all you do as you stand right here.
Amen.
Spoke, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the government of Georgia, to the state of God, and to the people of this world. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the East Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Turn the volume up a little bit.
All right, item two on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state field trips for New Caney High School band and blue bonds.
Good evening. We'd like for y'all to consider our two out-of-state trips for this year. One's going to be for band, and the other's going to be for blue bonds and proper.
Thank you. We are wanting to go to New York City. We went a couple years back, it was 2012, and we had a good time. Remarkably, the prices, the cheaper that it was back then, and it includes the luggage we had put in the luggage chair. So we'll be going to New York on March 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th with several excursions, and we'll be dancing at the Edge Dance Center, Broadway Dance Center in New York. We'll be seeing Lion King and Aladdin, and we'll have a spirit dinner cruise out to see the Statue of Liberty.
Good evening. The band is requesting to, excuse me, go layman Florida. This year, we're doing something different. Instead of going to a competition like we had in the past, we're going to actually do a workshop at Disney itself. And Disney workshop includes, one of their composers slash conductors will work with our band for 90 minutes on music from a Disney movie. And what we're doing is learning how to put music to an animated film. And so by the time we finish the workshop, our band will perform the actual music to the scene of the movie that we're working on, and then we'll get a DVD of the copy of the movie with our music behind it, which I think is very educational for our students to learn the background of how to put music to a movie and work with a world renowned composer, conductor from Disney. And while we're there, we'll be going two days to Disney World and two days to Universal Studios. We're going in January, January 11th to the 16th, to include the Martin Luther King Holiday Monday, so that we can add an extra day to our trip without missing any more school. So we respectfully request for permission to take our trip to Orlando for this year.
Would you like to see the DVD?
Oh, we'll pledge allegiance to you.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for New Caney High School band and blue bonds?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item three on the agenda is a public hearing on the New Caney ISD 2016-2017 budget and the 2016 tax rate.
This is our annual meeting for our proposed budget, proposed tax rate for the coming school year. Dr. Power, if you could cue that in real quick.
All right. Proposed budget for '16-'17, our general fund budget includes revenues of $126 million, $181,000, $196, and expenditures $126 million, $181,000, $196. This is a balanced budget. It is based on certified property values of a little over $3.5 billion and an ADA of $13,645. The next budget that started, that started last year, courts have to adopt the accelerated education budget. This is what we know as our comp ed budget. Goes towards those tutoring services, you know, helping struggling students, that sort of thing. That budget is included in the numbers I just showed you, and again, revenues in that budget of a little over 2.5, expenditures of 2.5, and that budget is balanced. I'd like to show where the majority of the budget is spent. Our top three functions for the budget. First one is as it should be, 57% of our total budget, a little over $72.3 million, goes in our function 11, our instruction category, that's things that deal with students directly. Second on that list, plant maintenance and operations, a little over 13.1, probably your biggest ticket items in there, utilities and churches, things of that nature. Number three, our school leadership, that's all of the campus support officers' principles, all the things they need to manage the campus and keep it going. That makes up 6% of our total budget. Just a reminder, with the guidance of the Finance Committee and you all, we set some priorities for this year's budget. It's proven to be very useful in creating the budget. The first one was reducing class sizes and overall grade levels. I feel like we've accomplished that. We added 18 elementary teaching positions and 22 secondary teaching positions from last year's budget for a total of 40. In addition to that, we added 12 campus-based care professionals. So again, increasing that number of campus support. Our priority two was creating a compensation plan that promotes retention and recruitment of staff. The budget includes a 4% control point raise for all staff. It also increased our starting teacher pay to $53,100. Our starting bus driver pay increased to $15 now. Our third priority was give people the stuff they need to do their jobs. That is based on campus allowances per student, so we didn't cut any campus budgets or anything like that. We tried to honor as many requests as possible while accomplishing goals one and two. And as you see, our fourth priority was to present you all a balanced budget tonight for adoption. So we've been able to do that at this point. Our debt service fund, that's how we pay our bond debt back, revenues of $23.9 and expenditures of $23.9. A slight deficit there, that is, in alignment with the bond law that Doug Whit, Brian Grubbs come down and present. We want to have these drawdowns of that fund balance over time based on what they tell us to do, what we need to do to get that cash balance down so we can create more capacity in the future. Child nutrition, the CEM comes up with this one, and that has revenues of $8.8 and expenditures of $8.8 billion, so again, another balanced budget. Moving on to the tax rate. Our current tax rate is $1.67. $1.17 of that goes towards maintenance and operations. That's just the day-to-day running of the district. 50 cents of that goes towards paying off that bond debt. Our proposed tax rate for next year does not change, still recommending $1.67, $1.17 on maintenance and operations and 50 cents on the interest and sinking side. Just a little educational piece, when we get into the actual adoption, we'll hear the words effective tax rate, and when you're speaking about tax rates and everything, effective means something different to them than it does to us. A lot of people think, oh, you're effectively raising our taxes. But this is from the comptroller website, and effective is just used for comparison only. So when there's, when you read the words effectively raising, we're not raising the taxes. This is just a comparison between last year and this year. And that's quite common when you have property values growth like we're having. But just what does that mean for us? Our effective tax rate was calculated to be a little over $1.52. Of course, we've got $1.67, and so that will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year. And again, that wording of effectively a 9.56% increase, again, not raising taxes, tax rate is the same, it's just in the wording and definitions of what the tax code says we have to do. That is our budget for '16-'17. I believe the next three items feel a little bit on the menu?
Yes, sir. So item four on the agenda is the consideration of the adoption of the 2016-'17 accelerated education budget that Mr. Cowherd just presented in the public hearing. Are there any questions or further discussion on the 2016-'17 accelerated education budget? Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the 2016-'17 accelerated education budget?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item five on the agenda is consideration of the adoption of the 2016-'17 general fund, child nutrition, and debt service budgets. Mr. Cowherd presented in the public hearing. So are there any questions or further discussions? Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the 2016-'17 general fund, child nutrition, and debt service budgets?
Yes, sir.
The motion's been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item six on the agenda is consideration of the 2016 tax rate. It was presented by Mr. Cowherd in the public hearing. Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the 2016 tax rate?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item seven on the agenda is open forum. When there is no one signed up, we speak in open forum tonight. Item eight on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for the purposes of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes in open meetings. The time is 6:44 PM. Board ended its closed meeting at 8:12 PM and will now reconvene in open session. Item nine on the agenda is reports and proposals to board members. Do we have any reports for board members? Item 10 on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Start off with Mr. Grant, demographic presentation.
Yes, sir. Over the past 12 years, we have been working with Dr. Gusman on demographics and things that we do here in the district for growth and projections and land planning and those type of things. And so with the help of the East Montgomery County group of district, we went to Dr. Gusman, and we got her, and we commissioned another demographic study for the Caney ISD, and so they're here today to present that to you. You have your books in front of you, and she's going to go reference them in her PowerPoint presentation, so I'll let them take it away.
We certainly do appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and to help work with the district to develop enrollment projections. With me tonight, I have Chris Poole and Gabe Amaro, who've also been working on this project, and we're here to answer questions predominantly and hope that you'll find the short summary of use to you. Sorry, I may have neglected to say we're from Agony as well. We did want to emphasize the fact that this is one of the smaller districts in this large consortium of 62 districts in the metropolitan area, and that's important to note because despite that, this district had a sizable increase of over 3,700 students over the last five years. That's a sizable increase. And then if we look at the percent increase, you see the red districts are the highest percent growth, but you'll easily spot the district that had the largest percent increase over that five-year time period. So what that means, of course, is that the district is facing a lot of growth challenges, and long-range planning becomes critical in districts that do see the type of growth that New Caney is expected to see in the next five years. We also looked at the fastest growth districts with the data that TEA made available at the end of the school year. The enrollment, of course, was very high for those top four or five school districts in terms of adding students for this past year, and New Caney ranked 17th. So of every district out of approximately 1,025 in the state, New Caney is, again, highlighted for facing growth, and you'll see that there's only one other district that grew that much that has as small an overall enrollment, and that's Prosper. We work with Prosper as well, it's just an arco frisco. Now here, the past growth rates are fascinating to quant, and you'll see that even with this last year, having the oil price downturn is a challenge for the district somewhat at least, that you continue to have a 6.43% growth. And also, if we look at the births of babies in this district and age of five years forward, we see that you could fence in the district, not allow a single new family in, and you would still grow in terms of enrollment. And that's a very good situation. It's good because the vast majority of the suburban school districts in Texas are seeing a real stagnation in the earlier grades. And so it's simply because the parents cannot afford the suburban school districts. And ever since the 2008 downturn, the parents have been moving more to the urban core for affordable housing than they did the store and break. Now here, again, we're looking at kindergarten relative to 12th grade, and you see another good sign. What you don't want to see is kindergarten in first grade being smaller than 12th grade. And so, for example, in Friendswood, there's, it varies by year, but a 23% to 28% difference because in Friendswood, they have smaller, earlier grades than they do secondary grades. And a 28% difference means that in very quick order, they will not need the same number of lower schools that they have today. Now, the district is unique. The most important characteristic is that it has slightly more millennials, especially we're interested in the 25- to 34-year-old cohort, and we realize that that's going to be a growing component of this district and will ultimately represent the home buyers as well as renters. Now, we have looked at private and charter school enrollment, and for this district, it's especially small, as you see in the blue columns. Right now, if you look at kindergarten and above, there are 433 that we recognize in private and charter schools, although there will be a smattering of students in many other schools that are near their parents' places of work that we will not have contacted as we did these schools. In the green columns are the five-year forward estimates by the headmasters or the equivalent of the PMS administrator for the private and charter schools. And you'll see that on the whole, because of the high growth of the school district, there will be a smaller percent in private and charter schools. So typically, unless there are two or three other charter schools that come into play, then that characteristic will hold, that you'll have an under 3% in five years. Employment trends. We are really interested right now in employment trends in this district. We're very interested at the same time in the housing trends by subdivision and apartment. Those are the ways we identify the future student enrollment. So if you're just looking at Montgomery County unemployment rate, that's the most important single number for June 2016. That's the most recent data available. It's up by less than 1%, but unemployment creeping up keeps parents from feeling secure enough to buy a new house or to relocate. So anytime unemployment is creeping up, it's a slight problem because this is only a slight change. Now, at the same time, New Caney ISD is in a fascinating situation and has been, where if we look at the downstream successes, we work with Humble and Sheldon school districts, and they, more than this district, are tied to the downstream employment that we think of as being the petrochemical plants, especially, of course, Sheldon. But if we look at Generation Park and other developments that are attracting the residents who live in this area to these places of work, we know that downstream employment is somewhat important. At the same time, with the opening of the Grand Parkway, then the upstream employment was highly touted. But now ExxonMobil, Southwestern, Anadarko, and other epicenters of that wonderful oil boom are actually declining in employment and sloughing off jobs. So really, you're at this economic and geographic crossroads where you're benefiting from one portion of the energy sector, and that is the downstream employment, but disbenefiting from the upstream employment. So I think that's important to think about because one is sort of a countervailing force against the other. And then at the same time, and I want to emphasize this too much, but the medical growth is profound in this district in terms of jobs and also entertainment and retail growth. So we're going to see fairly immediate growth in some of those sectors. We can feel secure that that will happen, and in most districts of this size, this would be considered tremendously impacting the enrollment for these new facilities to be entering the district or near by them. And you'll see here that the educational and healthcare services, again, the growth due to the Affordable Care Act in the Houston area just can't be overemphasized in terms of, this is the jobs of individuals who reside in New Caney and the types of employment that they have. But the healthcare sector is really a critical element for this district and will continue to grow, continue as a proportion. If it grows as a proportion, some other sector has to decline because this has to sum to 100% here. So important to keep that in mind. Then at the same time, looking at housing projections, we wanted you to know that the actively building out subdivisions added 52% of all the new students this past school year. So we don't know what will happen in a few weeks. It's going to be exciting to find out where these students have come from. But we've got a table in the report that shows how many students were added to every subdivision, in every apartment, every mobile home park. And mobile home parks did play a big role. 27% of all the added students, you know, there were under 900 students added, were in mobile home parks, 27%. And the most interesting figure there is that 9% came from already built-out subdivisions. And what that means is there's not a single new home being added, but those subdivisions are regenerating, so older people are leaving without a new home being added. 9% of the growth came from these built-out subdivisions, and this is probably going to be a way to look to the future and know that in Porter and other areas, you're going to see some of those homes that are 35 to 40 years old, regenerating with younger families that, because they're affordable. Now, of course, you know, I liked what Jim Clark said, I felt it so true, that the Grand Parkway was a godsend for Eastern Montgomery County. To me, that summed it all effectively because we had high hopes that the employment in the Woodlands, Congo, you know, I talked to two brokers in Humble that told me they were selling homes to individuals who were going to live in Humble and work in Caney thanks to the Grand Parkway. So, you know, it is having a big impact. At the same time, then, the newer segments, the future segments, possibly finished by 2021, will be connecting US 59, which is I-69, also to US 90, and then on to I-10. And that helps open up Dr. Duni Ganti's parcels, their view of parcels in this district, very large portion of the district. And then the on-and-off grabs for the Grand Parkway are going to spawn extensions over Riverwalk Drive and Coverland Global, and affect Landcraft, that's the Wilkinson family tracks there. And then we can continue with these impacts of the Westlake Houston, the long-term development. And that, you know, has already caused Friendswood to be interested in expansion to the north within the district. And again, we have to follow each of these transportation improvements because if you want to list the top three factors that cause student growth, one of those top three are major arterials that are added to the school district based on new residential development instantly, just on a direct one-to-one basis. It's fascinating to see. So we need to look at the housing trends right now and see what kind of shape the district is in, in regard to housing starts. Last year, if we worked our way through the second quarter, that data's just been made available by Metro Study for this district. There were 448 new home starts in that time period that ended in June of 2016. But the important thing to remember about that is that going through that period, then, starts were down quite a bit. They were down about 38%. And so that's, you know, that's important to keep in mind because we have been thinking of new homes accelerating every year. But right now, we know that the oil price has stabilized, and so if we look at starts as well as new home closings, which have been down 24% for the same time period in this district, then we know that this has more or less stabilized at this point. And so if we look then to the future, we know that there is going to continue to be the regeneration of older homes, that because of the affordability of even the newest homes in this district, that there's a greater housing demand due to that affordability among younger families with children. So those are two critical elements to keep in mind if we're summarizing critical facts about this district. At the same time, we wanted you to see in the last two years of what, how many big parcels changed ownership. And we consider that important in terms of investigating those parcels for speculative purposes, which ones are going to be residential. And some of these already are planned as residential, that's the north part of the district. Here's the south part. And that biggest hump that's red on the west side is the Hanover Parcels, that's Clint Wong's parcels there. Now, here are the parcels that are five-plus acres that are for sale nationwide. In other words, it's not just a localized sale of parcels or for sale by owner, but these are being heavily marketed by CoStar and Comgate, and so that's interesting to see as well. And so that's interesting to see as well. And many of them are right along I-69. And about three or four of them, probably six or seven, will be apartments. But it's just almost certain that three or four will be and have been planned essentially far apartments. So there's going to be a lot of immediate potential for added housing. So we wanted you also to see the utility districts because where you don't see a utility district, you see somewhat of a challenge. And so especially up in the northeast, I think it's important to keep that in mind because those current utility districts don't have a capacity to add other meters. They're not going to be adding individual homeowners. So there's some real challenges up in the northeast. But I guess you've been reading about the fact that there may be some support to pay you a couple of major arterials in that area. Thus, you know, one article journalist emphasized tremendous residential growth in that area, but that's doubtful, that there would be tremendous growth. But one or two arterials would certainly help in terms of bus transportation and sub-development. Here, we're showing utility districts. This is based on the Public Utility Commission, and the other was more of the COGS and City of Houston. They may differ somewhat. So I wanted you to see this, especially to know that you've got a long way to go with the buildout at 39%, actively building out 14%. Then you see, even if you take out parks, which is a small portion, and we could take out floodway and floodplain, but sometimes the floodplain is utilized. You see that we, in the beige and that pinkish-orangeish tone, have a long development timeframe. Now, the largest growth among the single-family developments is in master-planned communities. Valley Ranch, of course, leading the pack. Tavola, on the east side, is second. Royal Brook is the Friendswood development, and it may or may not become a reality. The probability in speaking with Friendswood is that it will. And they've already started the portion of Royal Brook that's just to the south of the district. So we are anticipating it, but it may stagger a bit. Woodbridge Park, especially Section 2 in the future portion, the landcraft developments that are planned by Wilkerson once the economy improves. That's the Caviar there, Brookwood Forest Springs. And then the future Tavola is on the west side of I-69. So one thing to keep in mind is that, based on the most recent data that we have, which is for 2014, under 22% of all of the housing units in this district were multifamily. And now, we project that by 2025, 37% will be multifamily. So that is simply because of the demand to live in this area. Projected housing in some for that 10-year period are represented by just under 11,000 housing units. And you'll note that while there were 448 that we've estimated through June, and we didn't have that data point when we projected this, but we project 437 for 2006 by the end of October, from the time we started these projections. 738 in 2017. And you see that it's 1,589 in 2024. As one of the higher dates, it's over 1,623. So that's quite an increase in housing units of all types for this specific district. Looking at that indicates major acceleration. Right now, this is just showing you where we anticipated the growth to be for the P E snapshot data in October. And this is less than a year's data. So Tavola's in the north and in the south is apartments predominantly. So here, then, we're looking at Tavola in the orange, Valley Ranch. And you are probably familiar with most of these areas. Woodbridge in red, and then, again, apartments also in the south. Then, it's interesting to look at the last five years of the 10-year projection period and see where those red areas are because up in the northwest, that's Ben Chang and John Dalton's development, and also landcraft, the Wilkerson development, further to the central western part. And of course, the Dalton parcels and the Chang parcels have been planned for years, but there's been no implementation yet for those. And then here is the 10-year projections. You see a lot of red. And then, we tried to look at buildout, not that it's going to be reliable, but we just wanted to try to study the buildout of the district to see where the number of students were going to cluster post-October of 2025. And so that's what this represents. And if we look at the ratios of students per single-family home right now in this district, did you think there were two children per home? Because it's .6. It's very, the statewide average is about .63 when we first started working with the district up through 2015. That's .63, that's the statewide average once then. And so very few homes have two students per home because there, you know, you have to weigh that against all the empty nesters and millennials and so forth. Multifamily is very low in this district right now because the apartments, on the whole, are so new and costly. So right now, .16 of a student lives in every occupied apartment unit. Now, to look at the projected enrollment, the most likely growth scenario indicates that by 2020, there will be almost 18,000 students in the district. And so that's five years' worth. And by 2025, then, around 23,000 in the district. So again, the need, very important to consider growth by subdivision and apartment so that you understand the locational configuration of growth and can build schools accordingly. It's where they're located, the students, to be so critical. And here, we're breaking out the percent growth each year and the added students with the largest number in 2025 added at over 1,100. And now, we're going to have Chris Cool talk a little bit about the current zones and where the needs are for new schools.
Okay, I promise I'm almost done. Now you guys have a session to leave, and it's getting late. But the first four chapters of this report, look at housing. It looks at the economic concerns, the ratios of students per house. We also geocoded student population. And as we assemble, we add to launch rate coordinates. We currently count them in various places. They have little dots on that. And that's great, but then you've got to do something with that data. So what we do is we take that data and we look at the projections. And we have the district divided into what we call planning units. There are little areas that initially were census block groups and we further subdivided them in some places to meet your attendance zones, to, you know, go along major boundaries and that sort of thing. And we have the data gathered down to the planning unit level. And so we turn that over to the district. And what we have for a planning unit, excuse me, is the projections by grade group for each one of the years of the next 10 years. And so we know that the first five years is going to be better data than the last five years. But when you're looking at building a school, especially something like a high school, and it's two years to construct it, and you've got to get the land, you've got to get the site prepared, you've got to get the money for it, we need to be looking further out than just looking the next couple of years. If we're planning by seeing the whites of their eyes, it's too late. So that's why we want to take this data and then look at it over the next 10 years. So first, what we do is take the data and have it back in your current attendance zones. So that's what this shows. It shows the, you know, 2018, 2021, 2025, sort of right now. These are the geocoded students. That means that we know that students transfer around between attendance zones for a lot of different reasons. But if we're going to look at attendance zone boundaries and look at the overall configuration of the district, we've got to start with district geocoded student population in each one of these attendance zones. So the thing that's important to look at here is the practical capacity of Oakley, for example, is 720, but for most of these facilities, it's around 900. So you can see that by 2021, we've got several of the school, the attendance zones, that will be over capacity. And certainly by 2025, we've got as many as 1,700 students in Tavola in the north. We've got King's Manor at 1,100, Cora at 1,100, Oakley at 1,100, and so forth and so on. So, you know, this shouldn't surprise you based on the things that you can just see. But then we have to figure out next what to do with them. So I want to emphasize very loudly that I'm not showing you attendance zones for 2017. I'm not showing you attendance zones for 2023 here in a minute. What we're looking at is just catchment areas. So if you guys won't get phone calls tomorrow morning saying, "You're moving my kid in 2023," I want everybody to realize that these are catchment areas. I want everybody to understand. But what we have to do is just identify sectors of the district that could support a new facility and when that could happen. And so I know you guys have Elementary 10 planned for, up here in the northwest, for 2017. So this sort of configuration, a catchment area, non-attendance zone, would adequately fill that facility, about 800 kids to start, you know, pushing 858, pushing on up to 900 fairly shortly. This leaves Tavola fairly small to start, but this particular catchment area for Tavola would still have 979 kids with all of that growth, all of those little red spots that we were showing earlier, projected by about 2025. The plan here, the idea here, is to look at how to open the facilities because you guys need quite a few of them in a short order, and how to open those facilities without rezoning students, you know, to provide as much stability as possible and yet make sense financially for the district, too. So even with the opening of that, we could look at Ben's Branch and Sorders Mill still. Sorders Mill, for example, in 2063 and 2020 would be well in excess of its capacity. So we'll be needing the opening of Elementary 11 in 2018. You guys already have that on the books, and then everybody understands that. The question here, to me, will become, say, of King's Manor, that that facility is able to relieve. You can see in this particular configuration, meaning King's Manor is fairly alone, and King's Manor needs an additional help. So we could be looking at Elementary 12 here on the eastern side in 2020. And then, with some of those far distant parcels that Dr. Gassman was just speaking about, we could be looking at an elementary supposed to run the western side of the district. We have it here shown in 2024. And but even if you look at this configuration, you can see that most of these facilities will be full. You know, it's not like it's going to slow down, and you've got a bunch of schools, and there are going to be a full hundred students. These are drawn such that most of them are very, very well utilized in 2024 with these four new facilities on the ground. The same thing goes for the middle schools. We'll start with the current attendance zones. And the good news here on the current attendance zones is they're very, very even. You guys are in spot, basically, due to student population. We've got most of them going over capacity at around five years from now. That's not exactly true. Going over 120% of capacity in about five years. Often, that's sort of the marker that we use when we get to 120% of capacity. Putting some portable buildings is normally good for planning purposes. But at about 120%, we start having problems with the lunchroom's not big enough, you don't have enough restroom facilities, not enough library space, et cetera, et cetera. So often, that 124% of capacity is sort of where we're in for school districts to realize, hey, we've got to have another facility on the ground. So we've looked here since some of the new facilities are on the west. We've looked here at a new facility in the east. And then ultimately, even one in the northeastern portion of the district. Later on, these two new facilities opening in 2023 or 2024, depending on exactly how things stagger out. You know, like I said, our first five years of data is going to be much better than our last five years of data. And so these are decisions that have to be made since you guys are in a good spot with the middle schools. These decisions don't have to be made until soon, but this is certainly something to watch. And I think these attendance zones, these catchment areas, break down very nicely over the entire district. Everything is getting very nicely situated. And then at the high school level, just briefly, it is important to realize that these do not take into account any of the special high school programs. They're geocoded students. This does not account for early college or something like that. This is how many 9th through 12th graders live or are projected to live in each one of these attendance zones. So if students are pulled from one of those zones and attend a different campus or are educated in a different way, then they're going to come off of these numbers, okay? So it's not that you're necessarily going to have 3,392 students in the New Caney zone in 2025 if you have a lot of those students that are enrolled in the college program or they're elsewhere than Caney. But we did look at the potential for third high school there in the south and how that might affect these attendance zones. Again, this is the geocoded 9th through 12th grade students. It doesn't seem to be grandfathering or anything like that. But this is just the beginning of the discussion of where you guys are headed and what your facility needs will be. And so we turned the data over to the district for them to be able to do exactly what we did here, protocol is to say, hey, we're looking at the site, you know, let's look at the drawn-in, let it amount, and see how well utilized that could be in the future. Does anybody have any questions? I hear lots of sighs.
Yeah, you know, it's a lot of information.
It is a lot of information. But it's dark outside, and I know it's probably a bit humid.
You guys have any questions?
So currently, we've been growing at a pretty good rate without a thorough, new thorough being opened, without any new businesses, anything going on, just the land we all we have. Now, we've opened up a thoroughfare, and we're going to bring in a tremendous amount of business, but yet we're only going to be increasing at the same rate. Seems to be really ultra-conservative to me, being that we're currently at your number right today, and we haven't even opened a school yet. We're close. We're at 14,582 is what you're estimating for this school year? That's what the data says here? Emmer, where are we at now? What number are we at?
Without no show still, we're about 14,6 as of today.
Okay, and so we're ahead of their data currently, and we haven't even opened the doors. And on average, we've been growing as a district. We've not just been growing in the beginning. We've grown as the year gets deeper in. We're growing and continuing to grow because we're opening up higher-end homes where the starter homes, now we're getting people that are moved in in their 30s where they can afford the $400,000 home and bringing two kids. So we're not only coming in from our elementary, we're now entering into our middle schools and to our high schools now. So we're not, we're just feeder-ing from the bottom. We're feeder-ing from all levels.
And, you know, we can see that in several of the areas where definitely you can tell by the size of the homes the older students are moving in and not the younger students in some of the largest of the subdivisions. So it is having a big impact, that secondary enrollment. So what we've done is tried to, and I don't think that it's a mistake to do this, but we've taken what we call the most likely conservative model to be our moderate growth scenario. So we know it's a bit conservative, but at the same time, the worst sin we can commit would be for you folks to commit to build too many schools, to make you too optimistic because we know that we're still going to see some stumbling and fumbling due to the oil price situation. That is what we play a role in. And it is a draw on employment. Parents can't buy a new house if they see the unemployment rate going up because they think that they might be next. So I agree with you wholeheartedly. And that's why we did emphasize this because I didn't want Mr. Franklin to disallow me. And we're returning again for giving you a lot of a presentation. But we had a low scenario growth and a high scenario growth that we would like for you to look at. And it is in the report. And I think that high scenario growth might be very productive. Now, personally, I like to look at the low scenario growth and know that if you need to build a school under the low scenario growth, you better get with it and get it done. So I think all three of those scenarios are going to be useful in this district because, did you see the page?
Right, 196, 197, 198.
So, no, I think you've made some excellent points. And I agree with you on every one of them, with the transportation improvements.
I have a question. You mentioned that, you know, our district, that new home closings were down 22% over some of the northwest.
I think it's 38%. Oh, closings down 24%. Starts are what I value the most because that's the kind of the leading edge, and it's down 38%.
How much of that do you believe is because of the fact that the subdivisions that we've had developed here in the last four or five years?
Are out of lots.
Are out of lots. They're no more out to build.
And we're also...
And we're also on the leading edge of the Grand Parkway. I mean, it just opened three months ago, four months ago. So the development's coming from, you know, like Dr. Chang's property out there, Dr. Chang's. And those developments will come on the heels of the Grand Parkway. So we're kind of, we seem almost in a limbo area, right?
So in truth, so let's use Tavoli as an example. Tavoli has grown too slowly relative to what Friendswood would have liked. So we talked with them, we've tried to estimate and we've estimated what we think is almost too high of a growth based on their proximity to the Grand Parkway. So, you know, we've, we've, we've had to really guesstimate what that impact will be relative to the past trends, which has been very, very slow for Tavola to build out. So now we're showing it building out much more rapidly and, and the same with the Valley Ranch housing and their apartments as well. So we've really accelerated the housing growth. This year, there were 448 through June of housing starts. We're estimating now that there will be for every year for six years, over 1,000, up to 1,600 and over in this 10-year period. So that's quite, you know, 1,600 is quite an acceleration from 448 through June. So, and that's under our most likely conservative scenario growth. So in other words, we've got, I think, six years of over 1,000 homes with most of those years being 13, 15, 1600.
And foundationally, you're basing that on what foundationally? Is that just an estimated economic turnaround?
So we, we really are, we primarily are basing it on two factors. One is how many homes we think are going to regenerate the children. That's a small factor, but it's important. And then the other is based on every subdivision and apartment, the probability that that apartment, first of all, will be built. It has to be a high probability or we didn't include it. We may have included it with zeros under it on the housing spreadsheet, makes up the body of that, a big part of that report. And so then for the housing projections for single family housing, we've done just what we described for Tavola. We've tried to estimate what will be the annual occupancy that we wait until instead of using starts, we personally use occupancies. And so we have accelerated those, but very carefully. And so that's why, because there are so many unknowns, we have that low scenario growth and a high scenario. Now this, this district, so of 62, which district is the highest perceived growth? This district. Where can we make the greatest error? It's where there's the highest percent growth because you have the greatest opportunity to fall, to stumble. And so that.
That can also go the other way.
Exactly.
Because you're still averaging it off of a basic growth though. We're already at the 14, 682 currently and we're going to blow it out of the water by 200 kids by the end of the year.
So you'll probably, for this.
So that means we're going to be close to year 15 too before we ever even get out of the school year.
That's a good point.
And then now we're going to be basing our decisions for the next five years off of, in my opinion, very, and you're calling it in your words, extreme or high scenarios. To me, they're extremely low scenarios. On your high scenario.
We'll be starting off next year based on what you're saying, looking at our data, we are probably 300 students behind for next, for the year, for the fall of 2017 because you're saying that there's going to be, you know, students added through the year. Even for Frisco, the highest growth district, they only add a small number after the Peace snapshot day. But, but yes, you're absolutely right. So we may be 300 too low already, you know, for next year.
Well, part of the dilemma there is we don't want to overbuild schools. The flip side is we don't want our kids going to school in a pole barn either, you know? So let's find a happy medium while we, we have enough schools for all our kids and not any extra storage space. You base a lot of this off of oil prices and, and the way the job growth and, but this district's, one of our biggest growth years was 2010. I think 2010 or 2011 made right a 7% growth. Coming right off of oil being at $38, $39 per.
Oil has never had a horrible impact on this district ever. It's never been extremely impacting for this district. So that's because you're right at this geographic crossroads where you're seeing, you know, the, what one side of oil is weak and the other side is strong. And again, if you look at the employment base, your predominant employment base is in the service sector. It's in medical, educational, you know, retail, entertainment, so forth.
Right. But in your, in your growth analysis, you mentioned the cost of oil or the price of oil having an impact on, on jobs.
And, yes, and also.
And that scenario having an impact on housing, right?
Housing makes, you know, it, it's the overall concern that people have that they're, that the economy in Houston is stumbling so that they, instead of leaping forward to relocate it by their new home, they're a little bit more cautious. Whether they need to be or not, it's a, it's a perception.
Do you know, just, I mean, by chance, what is the, I mean, how many people are moving to the Houston area annually right now? I mean, I don't know.
Well, you know, overall in Houston, to agree with what you've just stated about oil being unimportant, overall in Houston, housing is only down 12%.
Right.
Oh, it's actually 13% through June, 13% relative to June the year before. And then the existing older homes, their resales are only down 1%.
And multifamilies actually up from the last five years.
Well, it's, it's, there's not going to be any on the whole, any new multifamily built for about two years. It's over.
And they don't have to, they can build them forever. You know, the scariest part is you say that you're being ultra-conservative or somewhat conservative. I, I agree with Chad that you're very conservative and we still have 22,900 kids in 2025.
Could I get the last slide that he showed?
Yeah.
I wanted to ask him if I understood that correctly. That showed the high school. Am I understanding that correctly that what that's telling me is if we built a third high school, that within six to seven years, we'd be needing a fourth high school? Is that basically what that's telling me?
It, it is, except for the fact that you have other programs and things that the high school students do. So they actually attend New Caney Core or High School Free, then yes, if every single child attended one of those, with no change, you guys have their own college programs, that are growing and, and any, you know, we see.
How many we got?
It's kept out. It's kept out.
Four hundred, four hundred.
So we, what we see though is that, that high school, that districts are working in additional sorts of high school facilities and investment programs and it's online and it's all these other different things. So these are the ones that if every, this is where we're expecting every school ninth through 12th grade should live in one of those three pieces. They all have a school code, but one of those three schools is being asked out of the way. But I would suspect that quite a few come off the top of each one of those.
We are already seeing for the first time, we've talked about it for decades, but that there are students that are taking only online courses in the bigger school divisions.
Thank you very much. That was very informative and very scary. Got a construction update.
We're about to talk about buildings. We're building a few right now. We have speed on our design projects. Again, we came to middle school, we had about three or four meetings and we're continuing to have some more. By the next board meeting, we'll bring a sample floor plan to show you all where we're at with that new layout. As you probably know, elementary school number 11, we're still pinging on the man. High school, much like the middle school, we have the three meetings and we'll continue to go on. It'll take a little bit longer to design it because it's a little more involved than the middle school. And then, as you know, tonight we have a construction manager for the early college that goes out to bid on September 5th. Bid's about the 1st of October. We'll be holding board meetings for approval on early college. King's Manor renovation project, you know, last board meeting, we approved the contract for that, so that'll get started here at the end of the month. Also at King's Manor, you know, we're re-roofing the project. That's about 75% complete. Got a little water to build in this last week. More than will, but we're getting it all cleaned up and everything will be fine with that one. Crippin, I've got a couple of pictures here. Back up to early college, you see that's the land, the seven-point acre, we've got it cleared and we'll be ready to start on it. Here's the roof over Crippin, it's about 75%. Once they finish with this black stuff, they come along with the white cats and put that on there. We have not started the roof at New Caney High School. We'll finish up over King's Manor in another month and then we'll start on the high school. Card readers and cameras are about 95% complete. I will say that as far as card readers, we're not now caught up with about 93% of the resident districts in the country that all have card readers. Cameras, we're about up to speed with about 75% of the country on that. I'd have to say this program would have never really gotten where we're at without Dustin and his group, so a lot of kudos goes to those guys for taking care of getting that business done. The White Oak Middle School, it's, we've moved in today. We took occupancy of it. The equipment will be coming here next week or so and so we're, we're pretty much turning that over. Coaches have started to use that. Elementary school number 10, I can't say that we're exactly back on schedule, but we're very close. We've got about 80%, maybe 90% of parking lot done, 80% of the foundations for the building. You can barely see it, but back there off to the right is the structural steel package is started, so we're about 15% with that. Porter High School, oh, turn it off. Porter High School, we have a slant grade board on both parts of it, the classroom edition and the ag facility. So we'll probably start standing steel up there by the end of the month. And then of course, there's our block center sitting out there skating full of water right now. So we're again a little behind on that. We'll, we should be able to gain once we kind of get out of the ground. So, got any questions?
Hit the gun out there and fill it for you.
Be a little muddy though.
Okay, very good. Thanks, sir. Item 12 on the agenda is a consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of teacher appraisal calendar, consideration of UL exempt forces, consideration of local policy update 104, and consideration of donations. Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consideration to award agreement to Westfall Contractors for Design, Construction, Delivery Method under Bond 2015 renovations to New Caney High School.
Yes, this, you'll know, we went back to construction manager on this job. It was pretty complicated. Went through a pretty good process on selecting Westfall. Out of eight, we interviewed five and Westfall came out as a lower. They've been around quite a while. They have a tremendous amount of schools, they've done a lot of hospitals, they've done a lot of work in Spring Branch, a lot of major renovations and complicated projects over there, have been very successful. So we felt like they were a good, a good selection here and that's why we're recommending
Any questions? Is there a motion to award the agreement to Westfall Contractors for the Design, Construction, Delivery Method under Bond 2015 renovations to New Caney High School? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. An aye abstaining. Motion is approved.
Thank you much.
Item 13 on the agenda is consideration of vision and goals for New Caney ISD.
You have those before you. Of course, the mission and vision statement, we revised about two years ago. Most of you were here for that. The goals are a couple of years older than that, but those also include state requirements of meeting certain things within our goals. So you have those goals before you. We have to every year officially adopt those goals if that's what you'd like. If you don't want to do that, then unless you guys have some more already prepared, you probably would need to do a workshop and try to develop a goal set.
Any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the vision and goals for New Caney ISD? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Item 14 on the agenda is consideration of adoption of order calling school trustee election, taking all necessary thereof presented by our prior.
So in advance of our deadline to notify county election offices, we ask that you consider adopting an order to call for trustee election for November 8th, 2016.
Any questions for the discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the order calling the school trustee election and taking all necessary thereof? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. Nope, I would lie. Item 15 on the agenda is consideration of election agreements.
Item 15 regards agreements with Montgomery Harris County to conduct joint elections. Yes, that's the chief of that.
Any questions about that? Is there a motion to approve the election agreements?
I move.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All of the members say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is approved. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 9:07 Eastern.